Okay, we're gonna give it a couple more minutes and then we're gonna go ahead and start our Committee of the Whole. Okay, I'm gonna give it another minute and then we're gonna go ahead and start the Committee of the Whole.
George, could you get Alderman Donenworth?
We're gonna go ahead and start the Committee of the Whole. Can I have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, I forgot to call the meeting at, it was 5:57. Okay, Corporate Counsel Kanderski, can you read the review of the rules of procedure?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the Committee of the Whole. We are looking for tonight, given that there is a full panel of council members on this committee, five or more members that vote yea to an ordinance or resolution, it will appear on new business for the next city council agenda. If six or more members vote no, the proposal dies as indicative of it not likely to pass council and we will schedule the next Committee of the Whole before the end of the speaking, should it be necessary.
Thank you. At this time, it's audience time, anybody here for the Committee of the Whole that would like to speak? Okay.
We'll go pick up the sign-in sheet. Mr. Motley, is the signup sheet behind you for the Committee of the Whole? Anyone on it?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion if, for a first and a second, to move the new business before the old business. These two ordinances need to be voted on this evening and one will be on the agenda tonight and the other one is one that we need to have a decision pretty quickly on and I'll have Corporate Counsel explain that. So can I have a motion to move?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Alderman Turner, a second.
A second.
Alderman Bolton. Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donenworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A, can I have a first and a second to this and then I'll read it?
Make the motion.
Alderman Turner, a second.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez. Okay, this is an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 21 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances regarding unscheduled bus stops and this is one that was put on the agenda by myself and Corporate Counsel. And what this is addressing is, is some of you, you know, have learned in automatic briefings, we've had some buses come to Waukegan with asylum seekers. The first one came at 12:19 and it was a bus with, I believe, 39 people on it, some of them children, that went to the metro station. The problem is, the metro station is closed until 4:00 in the morning. Our fear is that we were actually notified, so we were there. We weren't notified by anybody, we were notified by, I believe, our metro. But had people have been dropped off there and left, there's no bus schedule until 4:00 in the morning. I believe that this is just inhumane to do to people where there's, you're just dropping people off without proper clothing, without proper accommodations or anything like that. There's no notification given to us that there's a bus coming.
Why wouldn't they just take them to Chicago? Why would they bring them up anywhere other than where they're?
Because Chicago put in an ordinance like we're putting in in all the surrounding committees or communities are doing, so that if a bus comes without notifying you that they're coming, they can have their bus impounded and it's $750 per passenger. So now what they're doing is they're leaving Texas, people don't know where they're going, they get on the bus, they end up in different communities and they're doing a metro station stop and then giving them, now, the last stop we had, they gave them metro tickets because they came in the daytime. And this time they came with what, we don't have another word for it, but the name handler. They came with somebody that had the metro tickets that got them on the metro to go to Chicago. But then they're taking them to Ogilvy Station and they still have to find their way to the processing center. It's just not close, you know, like I said, they're, they're kind of on their own. And this concerns me as a mayor of this city that, one, what is the plan? Like, so you take them to, you know, Ogilvy Station, how are they getting to the processing center? Is there somebody else there for them or are they being left again? They're coming up here in shorts, sandals, because that's how they're leaving Texas. So this is not just our community that's facing this, as you've all heard on the news, this is something that is happening to all the communities. It actually happened to Highland Park before us, it's continued to happen and all of us are starting to put this ordinance into place so that it sends the same message, you just can't do that. You have to be able to schedule with the community so that we know they're coming, so there's resources available. When you come in the middle of the night, who, what are the resources available? Nothing. What happened to us that night that, you know, because it had happened to Highland Park, we had a, we had a plan that if they actually made them get off the bus, we had another bus company that could take them to Chicago. But what that cost us was we had to have two officers escort them down to the processing center in Chicago because that's the only way Chicago would take them. So that's using our police department again to escort them down there. Had we not have known about it and they would have just been dropped off at the metro station in those kind of temperatures with not adequate clothing, I hate to think what might have happened. For me personally, as an immigrant to this country myself and understanding the difficulty, how it is when you first come to a strange country and how difficult it is to assimilate and not know where things are, I mean, I think for most of us living here, going to Ogilvy Station can be confusing, let alone if you've never been here, how terrorizing is that? And I don't think that's the way people should be greeted into a community. So I talked to Corporate Counsel about it, as many of you have seen, this is the, the thing that most communities are doing. And did you want to expand on that, Kelly?
Sure. I looked at other ordinances, specifically Aurora in Chicago, I looked at Waukegan's current municipal code to see where something like this could best fit. And so this ordinance that we have proposed tonight seeks to amend certain sections of Chapter 21 regarding stopping and standing of vehicles. In your board docs, your packet, I outlined a very long and detailed memo for you to review regarding what this ordinance would propose to do and how it would propose to do it. I think one of the most important takeaways is that the chief of police or his designee would, would receive notification in advance so that the city could start preparing resources. One of the concerns, you know, going forward is that as communities pass these ordinances and if other communities do not, the bus companies really are seeking out those communities that do not have an, an ordinance already passed where advance notice is required. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
So, may I? Thank you. So, we're proposing an amendment to this ordinance and the fine, fine is gonna be 300 to 750 max? What is the fine?
The fines I took from the existing code section, so the fine that's proposed is under the city's general penalties, so it's $25 up to $750, which include daily fines or impoundment of the vehicle under Section 21-133.
Can we go beyond $750 or is that the max?
You could, but to create a new fine section, then this ordinance could not go into effect for 10 days.
Okay. And can we specify that the bus be impounded, not an option, but a mandate?
Yes, so the ordinance as proposed mandates that there is coordination with the chief of police or his designee and that would come in the form of an application for the chief to review. And again, this is not, nothing in the ordinance suggests that the city would say you can't come or turn in the way, it just provides advance notice so that the city can prepare resources should it need to do so.
Can I add?
Alderman Florian, a second, then I'll come back, okay. Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Mayor. While you used what I believe is the correct verbiage, Mayor, in this document, it refers to them as migrants and I feel most of these people are asylum seekers and although that's somewhat semantics, it does make a difference. People keep saying that, you know, why don't they just follow the process, they're not following the rules? Well, they are following the rules for asylum, maybe not for true immigration. So I, I would like to see us change the wording in the, the ordinance from migrant person to asylum seeker because I believe there is a difference in, in what's happening. Most of these people are seeking asylum, they're not just migrating to our community. Are you gonna interrupt me, Alderman Turner?
I was just gonna say, how do we know what they're, whether they're asylum seekers or migrants or what? We don't know what their immigration status is, we're making assumptions, I think, I don't know.
But Corporate Counsel says there's nothing?
I don't think we should specify.
Nothing in the ordinance talks about the people on the bus, it talks about the buses. So does that refer to anybody?
I was reading the?
The memorandum.
Yes, sorry, okay, great. And while I agree that we need to have a plan and I agree that they shouldn't be dropped off in the middle of the night, I do think we have to remember that these are human beings and that they're, they're in a horrible situation, they've come to a country where they don't have the language, they don't have any resources. I don't know, many of you may or may not know, I'm the daughter of an illegal immigrant, an undocumented person. My mother came to this country undocumented and so I always have a, a place in my heart for people that come to this country because had my mother not done that, I wouldn't be sitting here. She would have never met my father, I would not exist. So I, I understand completely the idea behind this, but I'm still a little uncomfortable with the idea of us not being welcoming, not being as helpful as possible to this situation, so.
This isn't anything that, like, is not unwelcoming to them, it's the way that they're, the buses are bringing them. I am concerned for two things. One is, in a couple of communities, they have actually had people leave the bus and say they have a relative there. Well, how would you know they have a relative there when they leave Texas and they don't know who, where they're coming to? How would you just coincidentally have a relative there that would pick you up? To me, this opens the door for human trafficking, which I'm very concerned about. But this isn't anything about them, I mean, as long as the buses are scheduled, they can come and it's making sure they have the resources. But I think it's so inhumane to drop people off at a metro station, not knowing if they have proper clothing. I don't know, like, there's no bathrooms for them to go to, the metro station is closed. There's, you know, you've got the heat lamps outside, but like, this is not how people need to be treated coming to Waukegan. And, you know, it's the process of making them do it the right way as opposed to the way that they have been doing it.
I have a question. I'm gonna let, anything else, Alderman Florian, 'cause then I want Alderman Felix to go. Okay.
No, I also want to say, hey, we're gonna take, you know, for sure we're gonna take away your, your bus because then we, they don't have no way to go back to where they're supposed to. So I, I think this idea is good, I think it's, it's not about not being welcoming, like you said, it's more of, you know, they have a place to go, where they're gonna be processed, they're gonna be helped, they have the resources there, that's where they should go and we as a city should make a stand as well, along with other cities that were, were making sure that these people get to where they're supposed to go. And I don't think, I don't think, I think this is a good idea right now and if we're being proactive, then we won't be one of those cities targeted where they're just leaving people and, and that's unfair for them right now, especially with this, with this weather.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, I agree that validate those particular points that were made, but my question is, if there was, sit here on the bus and we're transferring them to another bus, are we convicting, doing the same, committing the same act when we take them back to Chicago? I mean, are they, what, can you explain the, you know, clarify?
Well, if escorted by the police, they, the Chicago facility will open for us. If they were just sent back without a police escort, then in a sense, you're right, we would be doing the same thing. But the city has made a provision that if they come in with an escort, then they will, will take them. But the reason that that was, they put this ordinance into the way that they did in Chicago was because they were bringing buses all hours of the day and night and they needed time to be able to process people. And so they put the stipulations in where you're not just gonna come unannounced, we need to know you're coming and that's what caused this. Kelly, did you want to expand on that?
Yes, so what the bus companies are doing in the absence of this or any other type of ordinance regulating the timeframe they could be dropped off is they're saying, here's the metro station, wait for the next train and hop on. But the incident that happened that we noted in the memo, they were dropped off at 12:30 in the morning with the next metro not coming until 4:00 AM and imagine now in, you know, 30 below zero weather, you have people and children standing outside waiting four-plus hours for a metro that's never gonna come, you know, until 4:00 AM. At least this way the chief will know, you know, chief or his staff will know that they're coming and the city could coordinate with the county in Chicago and make sure that they, they can arrive safely.
One last question, what resources, if we had to accommodate, what are we providing? Because we don't have a facility, we don't have staff, so can you give clarification to that?
Sure, so Chief of Staff Bridges is working with the Lake County? Emergency management. I was gonna say management and forgot the emergency part. So all of the city managers are working together and getting all of that information and how they're coordinating all that. So it's because of Highland Park going through it before we did that we were kind of aware of how this was going on because they were the first ones to have people dropped off at the metro station. So there is a plan in place, but again, one of the things that we have to be concerned about is any resources that you would use, whether it be mono-to-mono or any other source, resources that you would use, are not open in the middle of the night. So we wanna make sure that we know people are coming and these are the resources that are available, not just this drop them off and we'll see what happens kind of thing.
Sorry, one question. Is there any other financial resource, resources that are provided to us as a city? You know, are we working with our senator, are we working with our representative?
I would like to tell you that all this is thought out on the state, the federal level, everything else, it is not. So this changes on a day-to-day basis and like I said, Chief of Staff Bridges is working on that, but, I'm sorry. I'd like to tell you that it's all sorted out, that there is a plan, you know, that the state has a solid plan, the, the federal government has a solid plan. We don't, we're working through it as we encounter it. But it's being part of the Lake County Emergency Management that is helping us get through this and we're working together as a team on this. It is not just Waukegan, it's being part of a whole team. Thank you.
Alderman Florian?
To your point, Mayor, I believe the federal government needs to get their act together. This, this is a debacle. This Congress, I, I don't know if anyone's heard the news this last week, 24 bills they've passed in this Congress, it's the lowest number ever, it's usually 400, 500. They, there is just worse than gridlock happening in Washington and, and shame on us for electing these people who go there and don't do their job. So until the federal government gets a handle on this, this is the mess we're left with and it's put on our backs to try to figure out what to do. And we don't have the resources, we don't have the funds, it, it's ridiculous, frankly, that this is, is becoming such a crisis and the federal government is not stepping up and solving this problem.
If I can just say something, Mayor, I mean, every day it gets worse and worse, it's just unfortunate incident, they're arriving here on a false hope. But it's, it's too bad that we have, that they have to endure this, but my question is, can we provide them water or blanket to when they get back or are we just sending them back? I mean, what, what necessities can we give them in the immediate for them to, to go back to Chicago?
Well, they do, the buses that have come so far do have some blankets on them and they do have water and I don't know, I'm pretty sure they have bathroom facilities if they come from Texas. All we're doing is taking them back to Chicago and then they provide everything there at the processing center. So, Chief of Staff, did you have anything to add?
Yes, we are prepared with exactly what the mayor stated. Water, some blankets, Emergency Management Agency, they are stockpiling those and they will be available if we do have another drop-off in Waukegan. Those are the things the Emergency Management are supplying for us. Other than that, as the mayor stated, a warm bus and transportation to the Chicago landing zone.
I got a question. So I don't understand why they're dropping them off in, in neighboring cities if the city's gonna take them in. Can't they just keep them inside the bus until the facility opens, opens for processing? I mean, I mean, it seems like a logistics issue.
This is what the ordinance in Chicago did, was not allowing them to come all hours of the night. So they do go in the daytime to the processing center, but on the off-hours that they can't bring them to Chicago, this is how they're getting around it, is to go to metro stations. And like I said, initially when they came, there was nobody with them, they were just, it was the bus driver and, you know, the bus driver's kind of making the decisions. Lately, the communities are finding and including us that they had a handler last time. And I don't know if that's the exact name for it, but it's a person that has the train tickets and they came in the daytime, but again, they didn't have an appointment to go to Chicago, so they were bringing them and then sending them to the train station in Chicago and then later getting them to the processing center.
So basically a logistics issue, but because I don't understand why don't they just keep them in the bus until the, until Chicago's ready to process them. But I agree with this, they should go forward.
It's, it's generally a resource issue, so like, Chicago needs staff to process everyone coming in, they need to find beds and accommodations for everyone and they don't, you know, just like any other city, they don't necessarily have the staff around the clock. And so what the bus com, and again, this ordinance, I want to be clear, the way that it's drafted, does not punish the passengers on the bus, it does not. Instead, it, it targets the, the bus companies who are, let's face it, making money, lots of money off of these transports and trying to skirt around the law by placing these passengers in peril in communities that don't have any ordinances to protect the passengers. And so with that said, you know, it's, I want to be clear that nothing in here would, would punish a passenger, it's looking at the bus drivers and the bus companies.
I have a question, but who's coordinated? Because you figure they're getting on a bus, they're being sent, by now you would know, well, this is a setup, this is, you know, they're coming here again on false hopes. Who's coordinating, who's the one that's saying, get on the bus, they're gonna take care of you?
Well, if, in the news, at least the reports are, it's the governor of Texas and his staff are coordinating the transports.
Right, from Texas to Chicago, but from Chicago to here, who's, who's saying, hey, get on the bus?
They're coming straight here.
They're not coming from Chicago.
They're not going to Chicago. Yeah, they're bypassing Chicago to come to these other cities.
Looking for metros, communities near metro stations that do not have an ordinance where they could drop off all hours of the night, so they could just do as many drop-offs as possible.
Okay, makes sense, I, I, thank you, now I, I get it.
And Mayor, one more thing, can we please thank, I just want to thank the Waukegan Fire Department, Chief Paser, Chief Waukegan Police Department, Chief Navarro and our Emergency Management Team for the county for preparing. The safety of all of these individuals is very important and the way that the police and fire department worked that first night to get those individuals transported down to the landing zone was great and the chief and them providing the escort definitely should not go unsaid, all right? Just wanted to make sure I added those words.
And also thanks to Chief Bridges, who has been through this and been on all these Zoom meetings, and, you know, this has been a big amount of people working together, and we will continue to work together. But my concern is the welfare of people and that they are being treated as humanely and considerately as possible. And this is not the route to go in leaving this, this window open that they can do this.
I, I totally agree, Mayor. And if it's the governor of Texas doing this and moving us forward, I understand where, the state of Illinois, City of Chicago is accepting asylum seekers, but in the same point, Texas should not be sending them until we are ready to, to receive them. So if they're moving from city to city, each city should, if they're, if the starting point is Texas, then each city should say, okay, I'm ready for 5,000, okay, send 5,000. But the governor's bypassing all of it and just send them wherever he wants to, and that's not correct. It should be, it should be done correctly, they are asylum seekers, the logistics is horrible. But I agree with this, let's go for a vote.
Can we go ahead and do the vote? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donanworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion passed. Also, I'm, I vote on that. Thank you to everyone for understanding the circumstances, and again, I added this to the agenda quickly because we needed to make a decision on this, so thank you for being flexible and letting this be heard as, tonight, early. The next ordinance, can I have a first and a second for item B under new business? First. A second. Florian and Bolton. And it's an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 10-15 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances. And this was initiated by staff, and Corporate Counsel, do you want to explain this?
Yes, so ordinance section 10-15 of Chapter 10 of the code requires removal of garbage or debris from private property within a certain time period, typically 24 hours if notice is posted on the door of the building. The issue is, and, and the way that this ordinance was originally drafted, leaves room for a question that if the building is not owner occupied, and you stick a notice, a 24-hour notice on the door, and the owner doesn't see it, and then 24 hours later, property maintenance comes back and says, I'm writing you a citation, still don't see it, is that enough notice? And so the question arose based on a recent court case that we had, I took a look at the ordinance, and I've made recommendations allowing more time for notice for owners to, to receive that and to see it. So the only way that a 24-hour turnaround would happen now is if the owner was personally served with the ticket. Other than that, then, you know, there will be an increased notice provision, I think I put in seven days, yes. So all it does is amend the existing ordinance, allowing property owners to have more time unless they're handed the notice directly.
What happens if the, the people don't have their information updated? Because sometimes we call and the number's disconnected, or?
That this leaves a provision for property maintenance to then mail them the notice. Or they could, I mean, if, if it's a renter, if they're renting the building, they should have a renter's license with, with updated information. Notice could still be mailed to the building, but it provides seven days if the notice is mailed.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donanworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under old business, item A, can I have a first and a second for a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes? Alderman Newsom, a second?
Second.
Alderman Donanworth? Okay, this is a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes from Monday, December 18th, 2023. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donanworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor? Oh, aye. Okay, item B, can I have a first and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Alderman Turner, and second was Alderman Felix. This is a motion removing or removing prohibition of eye-catching signs. It's a proposed amendment to Section 4.12, which is prohibited signs. Oh, we had an ordinance that really didn't allow eye-catchers. And one of the things that, when I became mayor, because so many residents had complained about them, we enforced not having eye-catching signs. And a lot of it was because the community was upset that they'd find them in the street, they would find them all over the city. They were getting, in the winter months, they'd fall in the street, and then they'd get picked up by our plows. So we've done a good job of enforcing it, and you don't see eye-catching signs in the city anymore. Does that describe it? I'll ask Building Commissioner Sullis to, I mean, I, that's where we've been at. So we have been taking down all of the eye-catching signs. For those of you who don't know what eye-catching signs are, is there kind of the flags that are usually in the parkways that look like an eyebrow, for lack of a better word, that?
A feather.
A feather that advertise, they wave in the wind, that kind of stuff, and that's what they are. You want to?
Good evening, Counsel, how are you? Happy New Year. We have been enforcing all of the signs in parkways and all the prohibited signs for businesses, and enforcing signs of people that put up signs without getting up the proper permits as well. I believe that this motion was carried over for Alderman Martinez had some more questions regarding this, and, did you have more questions, sir?
No, my main, and I, I must say, the city does look so much better. But my main concern was like for new businesses, you know, like for a grand opening, they can get some kind of special concession where they can at least use it for that, for that moment. But, you know, I'm all for it, even with the way it is now, but I, I'm just, I was just looking out for new businesses that come to our town, you know, that way they can, they can, they can thrive, and, because a lot of businesses that, either they're going to make or break the first six months, it's going to determine what their success is going to be. But that's the reason why I have brought that up, like, for example, when we talked about the, the sushi restaurant on, you know, that, that right there, I think that, that, that helped them for business, but, you know, in, in that aspect, that's what I was, that was, I was considering. But I will say that the city does look much better without those crazy things everywhere, so I commend the mayor for that.
The problem that we do have is like, I, you know, I understand a new business. The hard part is when one person sees one doing it, then they think they can do it. And then it just, that's how this whole thing started to begin with, is it started with one business doing it, and now, well, if you've got two of these eye-catching signs in front, I've got to have three, you know what I mean? And it just expanded and expanded. What I will say is, one of the things that I see is some places that want to use them the most are places that need to revamp their own business plans. And places that are new, like Master Sushi, they have zoomed through social media. Social media was one of the best things that got them the business. And once people tried them, they were hooked. And that's the thing, is that's really what helps is word of mouth and, you know, getting that out more than eye-catching signs. But the biggest problem we have with eye-catching signs in this city is most of our businesses don't necessarily have, if we don't allow them in the parkways, because if we're going to allow eye-catching, then you've got to allow people to have their garage sale signs and everything else, because it, it gets hard to differentiate then. And then you are a city of signs. But the hard part is, most of our businesses don't really have anywhere on their property to put them. Most run right to the street or a parking lot, so the only place for them to put them is in a parkway.
So we, so it's, it's, it's not permit, no signs are permitted in the parkway, so I don't know why we keep going around and around with that. If they don't have space in their lot, and they put it in a parkway, which is city property, it'd be taken out, or you can give them a citation or whatever. And, you know, I mean, I do that with the, the non, like yard signs, right, in, in the sixth ward, I go around and pick those out and put them in people, back in people's yards. So I don't know why we keep going around about the parkways. This is the first of, I've, I've heard that there is a problem, and I can't imagine, you know, there's not 10,000 of these things that fall into the street and the snowplow can't go over them. They're, they're eye-catchers, and just like anything else, you know, we got Christmas lights, those are eye-catchers, right? So the, in, in past conversations, people talked about, well, you know, they're distracting to a driver. We see, see as we drive, we see any number of things, thousands, millions of things, we're, we're processing information, and just the glance of something floating in the wind, whether it be a flag or a sign or anything else, is not going to cause an accident. I, I've never heard of anyone being so distracted by eye-catching sign that, that they had an accident. And I will say that I've had, not recently, George, but in, in the past, I've had a number of complaints about the lack of consistent enforcement regards the eye-catching signs in that. You know, one code compliance officer is riding his or her area, the sign area, and they're enforcing, and, but the next area over is not, and then the proof, the person who gets a notice or a citation goes into the other area and say, why are they bothering me, but they didn't bother him? But I think they've done much better with, with the consistency.
It takes us a long time, there were a large number of these signs, it takes a while to clean everything up.
Right, so.
It's like garbage, it takes a long time to get garbage cleaned up.
But here's the thing, you know, the, these are businesses, and we're trying to be business-friendly, we should be business-friendly. And if a business decides that they want to put up a, a sign that kind of flutters in the wind, and some other business doesn't, that's okay. I mean, we, we're not trying to be uniform, and, and they can, every business has to advertise in the exact same way as, as neighboring businesses. I, I think this is a, it's, 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 it's an unnecessary ordinance. And I have had a number of people contact me as I'm going around and proactively talking to business owners and asking them what they need. And this is one of the things that came up, that we do away with it. I don't see it as a beautification issue, right? I mean, one, somebody says, hey, that looks ugly, but other people say, oh, I say, ooh, look at that, it's kind of neat, you know? Especially the big wavy, the man that waves in the wind, I kind of like those guys. Anyway, I don't see this as a big issue, I think we can repeal it. And if it becomes a, an issue where you thinking, well, we got 10,000 wavy signs, and we don't like wavy signs, then we can revisit it. But right now, I'd like to repeal this.
Alderman Florian?
So I have a couple of questions. First of all, for Commissioner Sullis, why do other communities not have these eye-catcher signs?
So the other communities do have them, but they also have ordinances against them, they're just not being enforced. So all the surrounding communities have very similar ordinances to what we have, as far as signs. I believe only one community has where it's a temporary basis, where somebody can pay for a permit for a temporary basis, which I believe our legal counsel has presented for this ordinance. But that takes enforcement afterwards as well, and, you know, we, I only have one license and zoning officer that would go after this, and be a little more difficult to get, you know, all nine inspectors on board to get this done.
So why, why do you think it's a good idea to prohibit them?
So the signs that are being prohibited do flutter in the wind, and they are meant to cause a distraction. They might not to certain people, but that's what they're there for, they're meant to catch your eye. And if you're driving on Belvedere doing 35, 40 miles an hour, and this thing's flapping, you turn your eyes, you know, for more than a second, you could be, you could become part of an accident.
Well, I, I have purposely driven Washington Street, Grand Avenue, Belvedere in the last, since we talked about this the last time, I saw none of them, and I, I appreciate that, so thank you for your.
Master Sushi did have a few up for a while, and they were asked to, to remove those, and they did. They still have a banner, I think they finally removed the banner, but they had a grand opening banner, which is allowed by ordinance with, with a permit for 30 days.
Can I?
I'm not done yet, okay? So Alderman Turner, I know, previously you submitted a request for have people put their garbage cans away, why did you do that?
Why did I want people to put, move their garbage cans from the curb back behind their house? Because that's where they belong.
And, and what, what, what about that, though? Why does that bother you? Why, why can't someone have their garbage can in their front yard if they want to?
Because it's, belongs back by the house, that's where you take your trash, you don't take your trash from your back door all the way out to the, to the street.
Some people might take it out their front door.
I don't see your point.
My point is, you didn't like garbage cans being around because you thought that was unsightly and unnecessary.
Well, it's garbage.
And I think these signs are garbage, so.
So I want to.
And let me, let me just finish, it's my time, right? So I, I understand, one of the businesses that asked you for this was Sunset House, so I went over there and looked. They have nowhere to put one of these, where, where exactly are they going to put them? Their parking lot goes right up to the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk goes to our property, so there's nowhere for them to stick one of these in the ground, where exactly do they want to put it?
Right next to their building, so they, and here's where that particular one came, since you mentioned it, but that's not the only one I'm speaking on behalf of. They did put them in the parkway, that was a problem, they were notified, and they did take it out and put it next to their building in the little planner area, and then they get another notice, you can't have the sign at all.
So, so you think having that sign right up next to their building is going to make all the difference for them in whether their business succeeds or fails?
I don't know, I'm, I'm not the marketing expert, but it's their business, let them do, gosh darn it, let people do what they want to do with their businesses.
But what about their garbage cans, they can't do what they want with their garbage cans?
You, you mentioned what other communities doing, one of their neighbors sent me six, seven pictures, and I said, are these from Lake Forest? No, the last one is in Gurnee, the others are in Knollwood, Green, and Green Oaks, which is in corporate Lake County, and they bought a lake bluff in Libertyville. Other communities aren't doing it, not that we have to keep going back, what are other communities doing? Though I'm going to raise that point in a next discussion, but, you know, why, why can't we be business-friendly? Why can't we let people make decisions for themselves? Why do we have to micromanage everyone's life and their business and their property and everything people do? We want to micromanage it, and that's not appropriate.
This is whether our city looks presentable, Alderman Martinez just said, how much better the city looks when you enforce the code?
Much better, much more presentable without Christmas lights, right? So we going to ban Christmas lights? No.
If I can just comment, I, I, sometimes I think that some of the businesses, they take advantage of the privilege. Because, for example, you know, not anymore, but at one time, there was this one business that they had a going out of business sale. And, you know, how long are you going to be going out of business? It was like maybe nine months, almost a year, and that sign, they still didn't go out of business. So I think sometimes the, if, if we are going to have it, it needs to be monitored, but by the same token, you know, people take advantage of that privilege. I mean, again, I, my ward, you guys can have it in your wards, but please omit third ward from having signs.
And, and eight, too, sign up, sign me up.
Maybe we could modify the, the amendment and just allow it in the sixth ward, that'd be good.
Getting a little out of hand, and it's not necessarily respective, respectful or productive. One way to handle this is through the signs, signage, through planning and zoning, you know, which we already are doing, in a sense. We don't need to be able to complicate this, in a sense, more than we have to. But I think one of the things that happens a lot in this city is one business sees another one doing it, and it just goes on and on, like what Alderman Martinez is saying. Alderman Felix?
I think it's a good idea with, with counsel, legal counsel proposed, or at least I believe, why not just have a, the, the businesses able to apply for a permit for a grand opening or for whatever the special occasion is?
why not just have the businesses able to apply for a permit for a grand opening, or for whatever the special occasion is, or whatever, you know, they can make that decision, and the planning department, whether they would allow it, but I think just a flat no, it's, I don't think that's, you're not letting businesses, you know, be, have their own discretion as to how they can market. So, I think it would be a good idea to at least maybe amend, exactly, not just taking it off, but also like letting the businesses apply for the permit, and, you know, yes, we would have to go and check to see if the businesses...
They have a permit?
Yeah, we have to check, but, you know, that's part of, that's our job, you know, we hold the city together, but we don't wanna just say a flat no. I think that we should give our community the ability to say, you know, "I wanna do this."
I think people should be able to advertise how they choose. What if we decide, well, you know, red signs, red signs are too distracting, so no red signs. Well, I don't like green or yellow either, so only certain colored signs.
I'm gonna let Alderman Hayes talk, because you've talked once and he hasn't. Alderman Hayes?
Oh, thanks, just real quick, Mayor. I think everyone agrees, and most of us have already congratulated the building commissioner for doing a good job in taking those signs down and enforcing the ordinance. To now revisit it and allow the signs to be put up would be to unwind all of those efforts and all of the hard work. I'm sure he could use more resources in his office, many of the departments probably could, but to now, just after all of those efforts, to go back and say, "You can put these signs up", or Alderman Felix's point, it's certainly not a bad point, but it requires more oversight, it requires more resources, it requires more time, and if something's gonna slip through the cracks, I'm willing to bet it might be a guy who's standing twenty feet tall waving in the wind along Belvedere Road, and it's not a knock on the department by any measure, but I think it becomes difficult to police. And I think we're setting ourselves up, again, for just more time, more resources, and then an ordinance that might not get enforced. So, I think that we've made huge strides in enforcing the ordinance, and I think that we should keep, we should continue to prohibit the use of those signs. Now, we heard earlier about a grand opening sign with a permit that you can put in your windows. There's other ways to market, the mayor's point was a good one about social media. I don't think it's any secret that that's probably the best way to get out to people nowadays. So, having the wavy signs, if that's what we're calling them, is, I said it before, I think it cheapens the look of the city. And one of my biggest concerns is, you've heard me say this before, is we haven't heard a single resident, an individual, a homeowner, come out and speak in favor of these wavy signs. In fact, we haven't even seen a business owner come before us and tell us why they want one, and we're sitting up here debating it. I'm sure some people have spoken with people in their wards, or business owners in their wards, but we're debating something that people don't even feel strongly enough about to come and talk to us. So, why would we change it? So, I think that there's plenty of ways to market, there's plenty of ways to put a grand opening sign, or a going out of business sign, or a grand reopening sign in your window, but I don't think the best way to do it is to toe the curb on your property line and put up these distractions. And, they're hideous, I think we can just all agree that they're hideous. So, it's not that we're not friendly to businesses, I would just, I think we should be equally as friendly to the residents, and I don't think the residents wanna see that.
Well, does Alderman Turner want to amend anything? 'Cause, I mean, I brought up an idea, but it's really up to Alderman Turner. Do you wanna amend anything, or you wanna just leave it as is and we vote on it? What do you wanna do?
You know, again, and I can't stress strongly enough, it's my belief that people can manage their own affairs, and we don't need to micromanage everything every business does. There is no harm caused, no more so than you drive down the street, you see an American flag waving in the wind, or any other flag. There's no major disturbance and, you know, distraction, right? It's not like you drive down the street and you see an explosion, or a car on fire, or police action, or an accident. Those are distractions that capture your attention and hold it. But seeing something just moving in the wind, we've all seen it, we, every one of us drives, and you see any number of things that kinda catch your attention very briefly, you process it and you move on.
So, do you want to vote as is?
As is, that's what I'm asking for.
Say one thing further is, number one, there's one thing being business friendly, but what we do find is that not every business owner is a responsible business owner. And if you don't believe that, then let's talk about liquor licenses and everything else.
Mayor, if one business that puts up a sign, and then another business, "Oh, man, that's a good idea, I wanna do that, too", what's wrong with that? Why is that a problem for people to make decisions for their own affairs? That's what I don't understand, to you.
It impacts the city as a whole.
You're the higher beholder, so what you perceive as being ugly, others don't.
Let's go ahead and vote on it. One last question?
I got it.
Okay, one real quick question. If we decided to do permits for this, would this add a burden to our staff already?
It would add burden to our license and zoning officer, correct?
Okay. Alderman Guzman?
Okay, so, I, okay, so this is very iffy for me, because businesses have a right to advertise their business and go from there. If you, I mean, and for eye catchers, if you wanna talk about distractions, and what's the stuff on Green Bay Road that's really, really big, and it's along highways, and everywhere that's changing with LEDs, but ours is not an LED one that changes from different advertising, so those, those right there. So, if you wanna get rid of eye catchers, that's a main one right there, so why are you okay with those? And those big ones?
So, bigger signs get permits, and they're allowed to have the changing displays, as long as they, they're within the ordinance?
So, that's my point right there. So, it should not be a straight no. It should be like, "Okay, come on in, and we can work with you", since right there, you just said it. They have the permits? No, they're looking for a straight no.
If they get a permit, it's less distracting. You know, we're basically talking about flags, right? That's what these signs are, we're calling them wavy flags, the eye catcher, they're flags, okay? So, you see a flag kinda fluttering in the wind, and all of a sudden, you're gonna get mesmerized and run into a tree. That doesn't make sense.
Okay, I think we can vote.
Here's what we're gonna do, is we're gonna do a vote on this, but all this does is move it to the council in two weeks to vote on. So, that's what you're voting on now, you're not voting on an actual ordinance to it. You're voting to move it forward or not move it forward.
Six votes to move it forward, right, Mayor? Five, excuse me, thank you.
Well, if I vote? Sorry, five votes move forward, six noes does not move forward.
Got it, okay.
Could we vote?
Okay. Um, okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
No.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
No.
Turner?
Aye.
Donnerworth?
Aye.
Florian?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Five, five to move it forward.
Um, we can have a discussion, if you'd like, for five minutes on the next one, because I'd like to give everybody a five-minute break before council starts, but council will start at seven. So, do you wanna start the discussion, or would you rather just wait till the next city council meeting?
Can we start the discussion? I think it's pretty simple.
Yes, we need a first and a second.
First.
Second.
Who was the first, Alderman Donnerworth, second was Alderman Felix, go ahead.
So, it's just basically to create a committee for a public safety committee. If you wanna go over really quick, the discussion would be for us to, as a council, pick who would be in the committee, and this would also have the police chief and fire, that's the proposed, we can talk about it, but and the fire chief as well, be in the committee with us. So, anything that is due to public safety, any ordinances that we wanna, any ideas that we wanna come up, it would go through this committee.
Well, actually, ordinances would go through the, um, the committee, what is it? The community development, so that wouldn't go through that committee.
So, if I wanted to talk about, like, an ordinance to, you know, fine people that don't have, that serve underage, that would go to the community development, or can it go to this one?
Where do you have that ordinance?
Using it as an example.
Using it as an example, for things that involve public safety, that's the point of this.
Okay, let me give a little history here. We used to have this committee, and, um, basically, you know, every time we have a committee head, there's, you're paying an alderman to head that up and everything, the committees have always been chosen by the mayor and approved by the council of who was on that committee. So, that would be a big change in an ordinance for one committee. But, I'm not sure what this committee is going to do, like, if it's purchasing for, you know, like, we're buying a new fire engine, that goes through finance anyway, because that has to go through the budget. So, I guess what my question is, is what is it, if it's legislation, that goes through the community development, not necessarily, even, no matter what it is?
It doesn't have to, it's only, for example, if something comes up, you decide, "Well, it's gonna go here", so it doesn't have to go to the community development, is that correct, Kelly?
Yeah, well, each committee has their own scope, so like, the proposed scope for this would be purchases, procurements for police and fire, road safety, and their public safety matters. So, right now, as the mayor described, those matters go to finance. Should you adopt the ordinance amending the committees to add public safety committee back? It could go to this committee also.
Okay, so that's what's proposed.
Yeah. There was a part of this that I saw that had to do with nuisances and offenses against morals, property, and public peace and safety. I'm not sure how we would regulate morals.
That's just a legal term for, it's kind of a catch-all for, like, you know, offenses like disorderly conduct, drinking in the public way, those kinds of things.
Okay, okay. So, I guess what I, you know, I mean, this is up to you guys, this is your thing. But, what I, I think the clarification is, is exactly what is this committee to do, and why is it different, like, why would the committee pick who's on it? Why would that be different than any other committee that's done?
So, I think, so that way, we can actually talk about, okay, well, who should be on this? I'll bring an example, not to, you know, put it in a bad light. Alderman, the other person, Newsom, is in community development, but she doesn't vote on liquor licenses, and a lot of liquor license issues go to that, so that way, we can make sure that we have a better, like, understanding between all of us.
About she votes no?
Yeah, always.
For that one, for liquor-involved things, just on the council, you don't? Right, right, you always vote no, right?
Right.
Right, right, so why would you have someone like that in that committee?
That's my prerogative, just like it's yours.
Everybody has the ability, as an alderman, to vote no on something, that's their right.
I'm not saying that, but in terms of, it's always gonna be a no, then it's, then it's, for sure, could be guided one-sided or whatever, if it's always a no.
My no vote doesn't stop anything.
No, I'm not saying it does, and it's not, again, nothing against you, it's just always a no, so I think that we can all decide who would be fit for the, I'm not saying it's myself, but that we can all have a say-so on who would be in this public safety committee.
I have that when I do the committee, and then I present it to you guys to approve. You don't necessarily appoint the committees.
When we all got assigned, we didn't have a say, we just, okay, that's, we just accepted it.
You could've said no. Mayor?
Alderman Florian?
How does a committee create a committee when the committee doesn't exist? Who, is Alderman Felix gonna get to decide who gets on this committee by himself, or how does that work?
That's what we're explaining, you're gonna have a say-so, everyone's gonna have a say-so who gets to be in this committee.
So, what, we're gonna just all vote on all nine of us and say yes or no on each person?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is this committee doing that isn't already being done by the other committees? What's different?
Are there any public safety issues that the committee has? All the time that we have, like, do the people talk about all these things that are, that the committee care about in terms of public safety? There are things out there that people care about, and so why don't we have something that specifically targets this issue, these issues? The audience time should be in this public safety committee, where they come and talk about these safety issues, where people are asking what's going on with this gun violence, and all that. They should come to this committee, not the committee, you know, they can come to the other one, but this is more targeted to this issue that people have, which is public safety.
So, then is this committee gonna dictate what the police and firemen do?
It doesn't dictate anything, ideas come through, we can pass through it like the regular committee does. If you're asking that question, that means that the community development dictates what the city does. It's the same question, so it doesn't, it just comes through the committee, and we vote on things together.
Yeah, what is the mission, that's what I wanna know, what is the ultimate mission here, which one accomplish?
Public safety. I mean, it's simple as that, things come through, and us as aldermen, at the end of the year, at the end of one year, if you guys are saying, "Well, what has your alderman done?", well, these are the issues that are brought in to the public safety committee that helps our community. That is something that brings more, you know, that on our end, we can be held accountable.
Alderman Bolton?
So, are you speaking in reference to the COPA?
No.
Where it talks about accountability?
No.
This is...
That has been addressed by our audience?
No, this is a committee, so boards and commissions, they can fall under committees. So, if we ever decide to do something like that, it falls under this kind of committee, so that's how Chicago does it, that's how, you know, but these, this committee would navigate if you guys ever would want to bring something like that. That's not what I'm proposing.
Mayor, my name?
Alderman Turner?
Thank you. So, I wanna thank Alderman Felix for bringing this up, you know, I've asked for this eleven times, and he's spot on. We do not, we do not speak about public safety issues here, ever, right? On a rare occasion, somebody say, "Oh, there was an incident over there", but we don't talk about the, like, in the summertime particularly, we have a crisis of these loud speeding cars, and they're speeding on major thoroughfares and side streets, right? They're extremely loud, there's a noise nuisance ordinance, right? We don't talk about the gang war that's going on, we don't talk about the fact that there's no longer a gang intelligence unit, you know, it's community crimes. We don't talk about anything related to public safety. I mean, the speeding cars alone, and in the sixth ward, I mean, they are racing, literally, drag racing on Sheridan, on the Amstutz, you can't have a conversation in your front yard. If you're on Sheridan Road, I've had to stop talking, 'cause of noise out there. But we don't talk about anything related to that. We don't have a holistic approach, even an awareness of the number, and again, I wanna point out this, you know, each of us talk to our residents, our neighbors, right? So, we come up here, and we're representing things, we're bringing to the fore issues that have been brought to us. And yet, the key issue for most people in Wall Keegan, I know there are areas that are more safe, right? But the key issue for most people is public safety, and we don't talk about it, we don't have a place to talk about it. And that's why we want the public safety committee.
I don't have, you know, a horse in this race, if you will. All I'm gonna say is, like, if we're gonna talk about cases, that can't happen in terms of, like, we can talk in, like, I'm just not sure what, yeah, where we're going with that. But, I mean, this is, your decision is, Alderman. So, did we wanna continue discussion, or did you wanna make a decision on this? Where are we at?
Uh, we could vote on it if you want.
We can vote on it.
Take a vote.
Roll call, please, for this to move forward.
So, we're voting on to continue to discuss it?
No, this is to move it forward, to go to the council in two weeks. Okay, so this is moving the creation of the public safety committee to the city council in two weeks. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
No.
Turner?
Aye.
Donnerworth?
Aye.
Florian?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Um, I'm just gonna vote present, I, this is up to them, I, it's fine, whatever.
Six, six votes to move it.
Six. Six votes to move it.
Now I need a motion to hold over the next item D and E to the next city council meeting, which is, I'm sorry, committee of the whole, to the next date, which is Tuesday, January 16th, is it? I'm pretty sure that's the date. Can I have a first and a second?
First, no.
No, because it's Tuesday, because we're on Luther King Day.
I'll show a move.
Okay, Alderman Martinez, second.
Second.
Alderman Florian had her hand up. Roll call please. That would, it would be just like it is now where we will determine that time. It'll, yeah.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donnerworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a five minute break and then we're back for council.
Don't we have to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Alderman Turner, second. Was that?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton. Roll call please. Can everybody, aye?
Alderman, aye.
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 Five minutes.